Unmuted.
Good evening.
This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you, Jamie. Good evening. Welcome to the Harwich Board of Selectmen's meeting for May 3, 2021. We did open this evening's meeting at 5:45 and then went into executive session in which we discussed two items. First item was with respect to collective bargaining for all town unions. If an open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position and the chair so declares. We next discussed the purchase exchange or lease of value of real property. If the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiating position. We had both those discussions, have decided on a course of action to proceed, and no conclusion yet, but we'll, we hope to come back in the next couple of weeks with some more definitive results. With that, I'd like to move to ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance to a real flag tonight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That sounded a lot better.
Thank you. We next move to weekly briefing, and Joe, I understand you're the heavy hitter tonight. You're on your own.
Unfortunately, Mr. Chairman, that's correct. You have to look at me and not Dr. O'Neil, but I'm pleased to report that Dr. O'Neil is taking some well-earned vacation time. In addition to what you have in your packet, and if I could, I would suggest that no greater sign of progress against the pandemic is the fact that you gentlemen have now returned to your rightful place in the Griffin Room to conduct your meetings, with the hope that someday soon we can open it up more broadly to the general public. But we have gone from red to yellow for Harwich, which is a wonderful action and result. The main item that I want to report beyond what was presented in your packets is just to inform the general public through the Board of Selectmen that the Harwich Board of Health will be conducting a meeting on Thursday, so this Thursday, May 6, at 3:00 PM. And the purpose for that Board of Health meeting is for them to revisit the mask order that has been in place in Harwichport. As you recall, Dr. O'Neil reminded us last week where Governor Baker is relaxing certain mask orders, any local orders are still in effect. So there is a Board of Health meeting, again Thursday, May 6, at 3:00 PM, and the Board will be revisiting the mask order, and by that I mean they'll be considering any actions relative to the existing order for masks to be worn in Harwichport. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, that constitutes the COVID-19 briefing for this week.
Thank you, Joe. And I'll move next to Cindy Williams to give us an update on the Chamber of Commerce.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Wow, loud.
You're in the shadows.
I'm gonna bring you down a little. Hope you can hear me now. Just a quick update. We had Cape Lake Compact last week doing energy assessment and installs, and out of the 93 businesses, 40% of those businesses that they visited participated. So some great savings will be happening for some of our businesses in town. And just a quick, you'll see all of this information in this week's Chronicle, but the Harwich Chamber is producing a Harwichopoly game. It's another way to market our town and our great members, so I'm super excited about that, but you'll read more about it in the Chronicle this week. Other than that, I'm gonna turn it over back over to you all. You have a very heavy agenda tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Any comments or questions for Cindy or for Joe, does that matter? For, other than with Thursday meeting, I guess, his next meeting, and I read that May 10 is when we move into Phase 2, Step 2, so that opens things up in addition to where we are now, if I read that right. Anyone here for a public comment?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know that we've been made aware of anyone seeking to speak under public.
Maybe we do, Jamie.
So we're gonna check the email and then continue on it, perhaps.
We'll come back to that if Jamie finds someone.
Not at all. We're kicking off the Russ getting back. That's right, that's right.
I sent in an email earlier today. My name is Lane Neen, to be heard.
Please go ahead.
I wanted to speak about Harwich Center and some of the things that are going on. We had a meeting. Joe was nice enough to meet with us on Friday to sort of review some of the things that we were told. I know that there's a state grant. I am the owner of Cape Cod Towers. I also touched base with the owner of Ruggies, the owner of Adeles, the church, people that reside on Parallel Street. No one was actually aware of what was going on and how it was going to impact us in the Harwich Center, both traffic-wise down Parallel Street, because I also live on Parallel Street, but also the fact that it's eliminating parking, which we have a really difficult time with already. I did get, was able to get blueprints for what has been proposed from the Highway Department and was shocked, and so were the other people going down the center and how that's gonna impact us. So we would like to continue to have a meeting. I think we had a really good meeting with Joe. Thank you very much. Just, he was very good about listening to us and some of our concerns. I do feel it's great to have the accessibility for our elderly and for any of us that walk through the center. Some of our concerns are the fact that they are suggesting that seating be out in the street, which would eliminate all parking down the center, or almost all the parking down the center, which is very difficult to run a business without parking. It also would be a hindrance as far as people walking down the center. A lot of people walk down the center. A lot of them have dogs. I don't think that it's a good health practice to be walking a dog down the center with a restaurant sort of on both sides. I know Ruggies, in particular, does not want seating outside of their restaurant, and so I'd just like to see if we could move forward in some more discussions about that and how it's impacting us.
Thank you, Lane. It sounds like you've had one discussion already, and I think, I imagine, Joe, you're with Griffin and has been involved with that. Have, will plan on additional discussions?
Certainly, yeah. And if I could just follow on Ms. Means' presentation this evening. I was prepared to discuss under the TAs' report, which comes at the conclusion of this meeting, to report out on that discussion that we had Friday afternoon.
Why don't you do it now and we'll...
Sure. Well, if I may, Ms. Means did, I think, an admirable job of recounting. So I had reached out to her because I received an email from her and some other abutters in that area, and so I decided to try to facilitate a discussion between those individuals that had questions and concerns and with Mr. Young, because his name came up from some of the participants there. Mr. Young wasn't able to attend. I know he was returning from a business trip, I believe, out of state. I did have a chance to speak with him after the meeting, but I conveyed to Ms. Means and the participants there that, you know, what's underway has been vetted by the Board, and that if there was a desire to have a more in-depth conversation, that I would bring that concept to the Board to see if the Board would entertain an agenda item in the future to get into some of the concerns of the folks around the area.
I think that sounds good. So that's the plan, is to have additional and then bring it back to us?
I can certainly do that, if that's the Board's preference.
I think it is. Michael?
Not to debate this, because we can't. It's not on the agenda. I think it'd be helpful if the Board could get any material that's floating around. I know there were some concept plans, but I do know some of our more popular social media sites this weekend picked up the fact that we were approving outdoor dining in Harwich Center, and I just want to say that if it's on a diagram as maybe can happen, there's still a lot of steps that would have to happen before anyone would get chairs and seats outside. So it may be, may have been done as a concept, but it certainly has nothing that's been approved by this Board.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll move ahead with that, with some more discussion and information, then we'll bring it back.
And Mr. Chairman, Jamie just provided a list. Everyone else that had asked to be recognized is in relation to other agenda items.
Okay.
So as we get into those, I can identify those individuals for you.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Jamie. You work, you work very fast.
Yes, town meeting, five days away.
Okay. Moving next on the agenda, then, is public hearings and presentations, and the first up is Cape Roots. Michael, I'll let you open the public notice.
I'll start opening the public hearing by reading the notice to the public. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of Massachusetts General Laws as amended that application has been made to this Board for an annual on-premise wine and malt liquor license for Cape Roots Market and Cafe LLC, DBA Cape Roots Market and Cafe. Gabriel Leidner, manager, on the following described premises located at 557 Route 28, Harwichport, Mass. 02646. Building consists of two floors with the market on the first floor, four condos on the second floor, two bathrooms, prep room, walk-in cooler, and office. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on the application on Monday, May 3, 2021, no earlier than 6:30 PM via go-to meeting, at which time all interested parties are cordially invited to dial in. Dial-in instructions were listed, submitted, Board of Selectmen, Local Licensing Authority, in the Cape Cod Times, April 14, 2021. And I would just note, Larry, that given this is a new license, baleran factors would be in play.
Okay, thank you. The second, we have a second to open the notice of the hearing. I'll take a roll call then. Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm aye. Joe, you wish to start, and I presume there will be someone, we have representative from Cape Roots.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, as Selectman McCaskill indicated, because you're sitting now as a local licensing authority, and as you've heard me say before, you're going to be relying upon the baleran factors as well as any input that you receive this evening, both from staff, from the applicant, and any other parties that wish to be heard. Just as a reminder to anyone participating, the baleran factors that would be contemplated this evening are, first, public need, meaning a consideration of the public want and the appropriateness of a liquor license at that particular location; number two, consideration of the number of existing dispensaries in a locality; number three, views of the inhabitants of the locality in which a license is sought, traffic, noise, size, the sort of operation that carries the license, and last but not least, consideration of the reputation of the applicant. Mr. Chairman, members, as I've said before, when you engage in these hearings, you've opened the public hearing by motion. You've done that, and the next step then is to hear from me and any other staff members. I will advise the Board that we have a completed application, which is why this is before the Board for your consideration this evening. Within the file, we have a recommend, excuse me, a memorandum from the Chief of Police, which states that the Harwich Police Department has conducted a background investigation that has revealed no disqualifying events or prior, previous liquor code violations by the applicants, and then the chief remains available if anyone had any questions for him regarding that. There are no other comments from staff relative to this license. Everything else appears to be in good order, and so generally, Mr. Chairman and members, what you do is you may see if the applicant wishes to speak and then open it up for public input.
Presume there's someone here from Cape Roots? Possibly not.
Maybe alert them, and leave some callers on, so maybe star six.
If you're on and you're muted, you have to star six to unmute yourself if you're on the phone.
Or at the bottom of the screen if they're on the computer.
Mr. Chairman, I will note there was no prior notice from anyone wishing to be heard from the public on this matter.
Okay, is there any, with that, I guess, we would close the public hearing and go into our discussion.
I would just encourage you to just ask one more time if there is anyone wishing to be heard.
We have someone now that wishes to weigh in. Would you identify yourself and...
Mr. Chairman, Richard Waystack, and I am a direct abutter and a neighbor of Cape Roots Market, and I strongly urge you to offer this license. They've been exceptional neighbors, and their business has started very well. They've got an excellent staff. They're policing the parking lot very, very well, so I strongly urge you, if you would, to support this license. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. You become a little more easier to identify when you grow in size. With that, Michael?
Would this be, Joe, would this section be the time for, maybe we just read into record what the police chief said or see if the police chief has any other comments?
So, yeah, so I did read, but if you want any further commentary, if there's anyone on.
Yeah, I don't know if any other staff member wants to...
Okay, we have the chief on, but it was very short. If you wish, we can read that.
I'm fine if no other board member.
There was no objection from the chief to summarize that.
With that, I'd move that we close the public hearing and go to board deliberation.
Second.
Second. Michael?
I have, I have no question. I would say that Gabri...
We have to vote it.
I'm sorry, I called you vote. Thank you. Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm aye. Michael, your comment?
Yeah, comments. I just would note Gabriel Leidner is also the manager of the Hot Stove and has a great reputation, and it's one of the, one of the businesses we don't hear a lot from, and I don't remember any noise complaints from, from that establishment, so I have no problem with this application.
Don, is that it?
Yeah, I'm not sure. When are we, are we gonna talk about the baleran factors?
Yes, we need, at some point, we need to go through and at least acknowledge them.
Personally, factors one through eight, I find no objection to any of the factors. They, in my mind, they meet a public need, they're in the right spot, they're right in the middle of a downtown area. It goes well with the actual operation. It's a new license, but it's not a new location. They are in operation, and it's a nice cafe. There aren't, there are very few dispensaries of this sort. As I said, it's cafe. It's not entertainment, it's just a flat-out adjunct to what they serve as food. Their views of the inhabitants, I don't, there hasn't been anybody weighing in against it. Traffic, noise, size, it's, as I said, it's downtown Harwichport. It is what it is, and they already occupy the space that they occupy. They just want to add the license to it. Sort of operation, Michael alluded to who it is that's going to be managing it, and I've been there a number of times. It's just a very nice casual place. It also is a market and a deli as part of the operation, so it's, it's a cute place. And consideration of the reputation of the applicant, there again. Ron has a license in the golf course, has a license in downtown Harwichport, and everything seems to be running well. So I have no objections on the basis of any of the baleran factors.
Thank you, Don. Yeah, superficially, my only thing that would pop up would be parking, and Richard's just commented that is no problem, and he's next door, so that responds to me. Ed, any comments?
Yeah, the only comment I have is in item three, the description of premises. The instructions are, please provide a complete description of the premises to be licensed, including the number of floors, number of rooms on each floor, any outdoor areas to be included in the licensed area, and total square footage. You must also submit a floor plan. Well, in their description, they indicate that the building has two floors and there are four condos on the top floor, and is that to imply that those condos are part of the licensed premise? I don't think so.
I don't think so.
That's the building they're in.
You know, but, you know, it isn't to, the description should be only of the licensed premise, not include this extra stuff, so if they, they could amend that to be clear. And the other, the other question is, do they intend, I know they put tables out front, do they intend those tables to be within their, their licensed premise or not? I know when the Hot Stove opened up and they had tables out front, initially, they didn't include those in their license description, and had to come back at a later time and do a whole amendment process, which was another 500 bucks between here and the State Liquor Board to get that approved. And so, you know, it's unfortunate nobody's on to clear that up for us, but, you know, the, the diagram that they submit doesn't really, isn't really clear whether anything outside the footprint of the building is included.
Michael, I was gonna ask Joe for...
I think that's a great point. I think if we vote this license, now it's for inside only.
Yeah, and, and, you know...
But then the question is, if we do that, Joe, do they need to come back to amend it, or can we, so we should postpone it and then do it one time?
I would recommend you reconsideration, reconsider the closing to open the hearing back up and continue if you want to have them come back. Otherwise, you can come back without the public input and table for a later date. I do know that the expectation is that, that the establishment be approved with three outdoor tables of two, but that needs to be expressly stated, and I think the points that the Board members have made are appropriate.
With that, an entertaining motion to reconsider? Don, before we get a second?
Yeah, I just want to point out that time is the essence here, because I'm pretty sure that they're making this request so that they could be open by Memorial Day weekend, in which case we're actually denying them the inside.
Do we schedule for Saturday morning, be a short discussion?
I'm sorry, Saturday morning? I, I would recommend a come back at a regular board meeting.
Okay.
But I would also advise that even if the Board were approved, to approve it this evening, it still needs to be transmitted to the ABCC. It needs to go through the Department of Revenue, Department of Unemployment Benefits. It's not a guarantee that they would have that Memorial Day, even if the Board approved it this evening. So there is a process, generally speaking, where they're advised it can take four to six weeks. Ed?
You know, and if we do, what, delay it until next, next week, we have in the past reached out to our state legislative delegation to help expedite a license.
Michael?
Why can't we make the motion to include it out front? If they don't use it, they don't use it. It's three tables.
That's a good point.
And it's across the street at, at Three Monkeys now, it's at Hot Stove now, it's down an alleyway for one bar.
I would, yeah, I would go with that. Simplify it, because we're not going to object, we're not going to object to it.
If they don't use it, they don't use it.
Well, and then the other, the other, and I don't have any problem with doing that either. The other, the other, part of that amendment would be to indicate that the licensed premise only includes the first floor, because from their description, it describes the second floor also.
So the first floor plus three tables in the front.
Yeah.
Well, we had a motion, we didn't have a second, Joe.
So I would make a, I would make a new motion. So I move that we approve the application for new annual wine and malt on-premise liquor license for Cape Roots Market and Cafe LLC, DBA Cape Roots Market and Cafe. Licensed premise to include indoor first floor and three tables in front of the building.
Second.
Second. Joe, did you want to say something more on that?
Well, first, I appreciated what Selectman McManus was suggesting. I believe the motion as made captures that, but I think that was a point well made. I do think it's appropriate, though, that the Board take two distinct votes. The first can certainly be this, but you should be on record indicating, as Selectman Howell had stated in his deliberation, that you find no negative impact of the baleran factors.
Okay.
So you do want to have both of those votes concurrent. I would not recommend that you co-mingle. I would have them be separate.
Okay. Well, a little bit out of order, but we have a motion and a second now. Any more discussion on the license itself? If not, take a roll call. Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm aye. Michael?
Aye.
And an entertaining motion for the baleran factors?
May I make a motion that in consideration of the eight baleran factors that we have deliberated over them and that they're, they have not failed any of those factors, and that I would motion that we approve acceptance within the baleran factors.
The second?
Yes, second.
The second? Any, any discussion? Now, I'll take a roll call. Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm aye.
I'll open the next public hearing.
Please.
Okay. Opening the next public hearing by reading the public notification. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of Massachusetts General Laws as amended that application has been made to this Board for a transfer of seasonal on-premise all-alcoholic beverages license now held by Phoenix Park LLC, DBA The Cape Cod Irish Pub, 126 Route 28, Harwich, Mass. Brendan O'Reilly, manager, to Chase Escape Cape Cod LLC, DBA The Summer House Cafe, 126 Route 28, West Harwich, Mass. Thomas Paulini, manager, on the following described premises located at 126 Route 28, West Harwich, Mass. Two-story wood frame structure with nine rooms on first floor, including dining room and lounge, five rooms on the upper floor, cellar for storage with rear entrances and exits on easterly side of building, and one entrance and exit in rear and existing outdoor deck. Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on the application on Monday, May 3, 2021, no earlier than 6:30 PM remotely via go-to meeting. Information listed in the ad. Board of Selectmen, Local Licensing Authority, Cape Cod Times, April 15, 2021.
Second.
Second. Thank you. I'll take a roll call then to open the public hearing. Don?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm aye.
Mr. Chair, I move that we close the public hearing.
If I may.
Go ahead.
I apologize. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, in, in comporting with your regulations, Section 1, 1.02F indicates that the Authority may, with the consent of the applicant, continue the hearing. Given that this is not the applicant's decision, and I do know we're joined this evening by Thomas Paulini, one of the applicants representing, you may want to inquire of Mr. Paulini if he accepts that. If he doesn't, I can inform the Board of other choices that you have.
Can I point of order?
Don?
After that discussion, the motion would properly be to continue the public hearing to another date certain?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask why? Is that, Mr.?
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may. So the Board, you have in your packet a memorandum from VTO folks. After reviewing the liquor license transfer application for Phoenix Park LLC doing business as The Cape Cod Irish Pub to Chase Escape Cape Cod LLC, DBA The Summer House Cafe, located at 126 Route 28, West Harwich, I recommend that the Board of Selectmen continue this hearing to a future date. At this time, I consider this application to be incomplete due to reports from the Health Department and Building Department that indicate that there are still pending actions awaiting action by the applicant and those departments.
Does that answer your question, Tom?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
And, Joe, if I can paraphrase what you said, you're asking Tom if he agrees with the postponement for a date certain?
Yes, the Authority is looking to continue the hearing. You're asking the applicant if he agrees to the continuation.
I, yes, I, I don't have a choice, because I guess we have a, the Building Department pending application with them.
Okay. With that, then, Michael, you started a motion?
Yep. I move that we continue this public hearing till May 17, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
Second.
Second. Discussion? Now I hear a, roll call, Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm aye. Thank you. We move next to, we have nothing on, on old business for this evening, so we'll move to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve a Caleb Chase request in the amount of $1,000.
Second.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, vote. Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm aye. New business then.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Assistant Town Administrator's recommendation to grant permission to install one J.O. pole. to grant permission to install one J O pole 66 dash 27.5 on the northeastern side of Route 137, southeast of intersection with Austin Road. New location being approximately 311 feet southeast of center line of Austin Road is 103 feet southe- southeasterly of existing pole 6628 and 106 feet northwesterly of existing pole 66 dash 27 and subject to conditions from staff.
Second.
Second. Uh, Joe, do you have any further comments on this?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to, to read into the record the conditions of staff. Um, first, we have, um, from our, um, uh, highway roads manager, Chris Nickerson. Uh, there are two drainage systems in that area, both of which need to be protected for damage during the installation process. Uh, town engineer has indicated that the new pole should be set behind the sidewalk, so pedestrian travel, uh, will not be impacted. Uh, and I apologize, there's a further comment from, uh, Chief Gilmett that a detail work is requ- um, a detail is required for work crew in the travel rain of, of lane of Route 137. So we just recommend, uh, that those, um, recommendations from staff be adhered.
Okay. Uh, further comments, Michael?
My only comment to, uh, to the public is that, um, the hearing notifications and the minutes of said hearing are in the packet. There's an awful lot of measurements here, and I'm not sure anyone could go find those polls, but, um, but the full description and minutes to the public hearing that took place on this is in the packet.
Are there any comments from, uh, anyone listening in? Hearing done. We have a motion and a second. I'll ask for a roll call, Michael?
Aye.
I'm an aye, Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move then next to the, uh, item B.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Assistant Town Administrator's recommendation, the request to installing approximately 31 feet of one to three-inch conduit and cable and one handhold number 69 dash H12A in Town Road to provide electrical service to a customer at 83 Mile Street, Harwich.
Second.
Second. Uh, Joe, any, uh, comment?
Uh, there were no additional comments from staff.
Okay. Any other concerns or questions from anyone? Now that our, we have a motion and a second, I'll ask for a roll call, Michael?
Aye.
I'm an aye, Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Anyone problem with any of the minutes?
Nope.
None?
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve the Board of Selectmen minutes, meeting minutes for February 1st, 2021, April 5th, 2021, April 12th, 2021.
Second.
Discussion, comments, as normal, they're very thorough. And Don?
Yeah, with the sad notation that the third set of minutes was absent Stephen Ford. Uh, it's, again, a sad moment.
Yeah. Dave, thank you for that, Don. We have a motion and a second, uh, roll call, Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm aye. Uh, next item, uh, is a discussion on the establishment of the Harwich Climate Action Committee. Ed, you brought this to us, and now let you, uh, introduce it.
Um, at last, uh, fall's town meeting, or our last annual town meeting, which happened in the fall, um, outside, uh, uh, petition article was brought on the topic of, uh, the town taking action on, uh, moving forward on reducing, uh, our carbon footprint in response to, uh, the climate changes that are occurring, uh, on our, on our planet. Um, uh, as, uh, there was a request to, to move forward, uh, on it, and I'm trying to find, uh, uh, in it. I, uh, uh, spent the last week looking into what other towns had done, uh, in response, uh, to, uh, the changes in our climate. A number of towns have, uh, created, uh, climate action committees, um, to assess, uh, the, uh, impact their town is having on, uh, their, uh, climate, uh, carbon footprint, on, uh, assessing the practices that the town, uh, undertakes and to make recommendations where appropriate, uh, to do things, uh, going forward in a way that, uh, helps, uh, reduce the, uh, carbon footprint impact that we're ha- that the town is having into, uh, with the ultimate goal of reducing the buildup of, uh, carbon dioxide gas in the atmosphere, which is causing, uh, the increase in, in, uh, uh, global temperatures. Um, also to look into areas such as coastal resiliency, which is being affected, uh, by the rise in, in, uh, sea levels and other, uh, um, areas of concern in the town related to, uh, uh, changes in the climate. Um, uh, the, uh, this is meant to be a, a point to begin the discussion. Um, I, it's an issue that I think, uh, I'm quite concerned about going forward. I'm quite concerned about the, the nature of the, uh, earth that we're leaving to our children. And I wanted to make sure that some sort of dialogue had, was begun before, uh, my term on the board ends. Um, so I, uh, is bringing this forward. Whether we take action on it tonight or later, um, is, uh, uh, up to us, the four of us together. Um, we may want to seek other, uh, input, uh, on this. This is, uh, uh, merely what I could pull together, uh, from what I've seen, uh, as best practices that's happening in other towns, both on the ta- the Cape and throughout the Commonwealth. I will note, um, I think we all received, uh, this week, uh, the end of this week, uh, mailing from the Cape Cod Commission that they've released their, their draft of the Orange Temple County Regional, uh, Climate Action Plan, which I think would be very helpful in a committee such as this to review as a starting point, um, in moving forward.
Thank you, Ed. There are comments? Michael?
I just first, thank you, Ed, for, uh, all the work that you put into this. Uh, I'm glad to hear that, that, uh, or at least the suggestion, not taking action tonight with the amount of meetings that we've had lately and the amount of stuff I've had to read and absorb and preparing for town meeting, I did not have time to do a lot of investigative work on this. So I would have certainly appreciate some more time to look at what the other towns are doing. And, um, the only comment that I could make on the, uh, charge itself is I'm a little concerned with giving a committee a budget. And I think that this budget might be more, so the seeking of, uh, professionals, I, I think that that should be left, uh, recommendation and then obviously voted by the Board of Selectmen. So I don't, I'm not, I'm not that keen on giving them a budget, but I'm not, I'm not close-minded to it. Um, certainly, uh, the will of the people, last town meeting, the, the majority of them were to form said committee. So I am, I am, I'm looking forward to doing more work on it, and I appreciate the work you've already done on it.
Uh, Don, do you have a-
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, last time we did some, a transformational type of committee was the Housing Committee. Uh, nineteen, I mean, in 2000. Uh, that was preceded by a bunch of symposia that we had defining the problem and, and what it is we were trying to seek to achieve, uh, on the basis of that. It, I, I'll agree with Ed that, uh, last town meeting addressed this. We need to have that symposium. We, we now have the study from the Cape Cod Commission that we can use as a start point. Then we need to have some community engagement to see, you know, what, what we can get from awareness, everything. And frankly, I'd like to see the charges from the other two towns that adopted this, you know, what they look like. And I agree with Michael. I mean, part of my inclination on this was if, before we, uh, considered doing this, do we really want a seven-member committee, you know, that's all outside individuals? Or would, would we want a couple of staff to be, like we do? I know it's not as great in magnitude, but the Bike, uh, Committee and the, uh, Traffic Safety Committee, where we have actual ex officio people who are staff members and who are informed about, you know, practicalities, uh, to do this. But I mean, it, it's a good point to start the discussion because you always have to have a, a starting point. But I, I can't see unacting it tonight because it's, it's just, there's, it's this big. I mean, there's a lot of things that should go into this.
Did I, uh, Ed?
Yeah, just to note, um, Michael, the, um, uh, the detail on, in, in the charge about funding is if, if, uh, they want to propose a budget, they can submit it like anybody else and it gets approved or not approved through the budget process. Um, it wasn't mandating that they get a budget.
Uh, Don?
Yeah, and I also take note, it's not like we've been sitting around doing nothing. We've taken action on plastics, we've taken action on adopting beyond the stretch code to become a green town. I mean, so we're not, we're not taking no actions. It's just that before we start, you know, doing a standing committee where we have a bazillion of them and we don't actually have them all staffed at the moment, I really want to get the public fired up about what it is we're trying to accomplish before we actually try to accomplish it.
And as, as you and I have talked, uh, thank you for putting this together. Yeah, I was reacting to the town meeting vote. Uh, and I like the idea, I think, Don, you mentioned some public engagement because if you, uh, especially if you watch the federal news and stuff, it's all, uh, one-sided. There's not the discussion about different aspects, what it, what it means to not only carbon dioxide reduction, but, uh, local, short-term economy, long-term economy. Uh, quite frankly, risk assessment. You have gone into kind of a precautionary risk assessment where expect to get to zero risk, which we all know is not possible. But, uh, as much input as we, it'd be, it'd be fantastic if we could, uh, kind of lead the way in having a, uh, discussion that involves everyone and get to the best point. Because we all know we have to address the issue, but do it in a way that makes sense.
Yeah.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'd be remiss for not taking a partisan, uh, shot at this too. As the Chair of the Housing Trust, I also have to point out that there are implications in a lot of these things, and you, you just kind of alluded to that. I want to make sure that we have a, a broad range of stakeholders here because essentially, we could be talking about things that would price out the possibility of ever doing anything.
Or it could be incentive to do more, what's the states been pushing, smart growth?
Either way, there, there's gotta be a lot of discussion. There are stakeholders beyond just this.
We can do it, uh, it'll rely on how we come up with it and also who's appointed. Uh, Joe, and I think we have one attendee who wants to comment, but Joe?
Uh, we, we do have three individuals-
Okay.
-um, that have signed up to be heard, if you're ready for that at this point.
Already?
Um, so-
Uh, Ed?
Yeah, just, you know, one, one comment. You know, like I said, this was, uh, meant to kickstart the discussion. And, you know, nothing gets a good discussion kickstarted than sort of making an extreme proposal from the get-go. But, um, you know, it's, uh, uh, I, the other, the other issue that I think, um, why I bring it up now, also to get the discussion moving, is as we are with our new, uh, community, uh, Planning and Community Development Director, we will probably quite quickly start picking up on doing our comprehensive plan review. And I think this needs to be, these sorts of considerations need to be a major consideration in, in that review.
Yep. Yep, agreed. Uh, Joe, are we ready for, uh-
If I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize, this will be the order in which they were received. Uh, the first individual was Robin Lord. I believe Robin is on the phone.
Robin, are you, uh, able to speak to us now?
Hi, uh, I'm, I'm here, can you hear me?
We can.
Uh, I would defer to, I'm a, I'm a member of the Harwich, uh, uh, Climate Action Network, uh, who, we were the sponsors of the resolution at town meeting. And I would defer to my committee member, um, Susan Patterson. She was gonna sort of speak for us.
Okay.
That would be the second individual on the list, Mr. Chairman?
Makes it easy then, Susan, we'll, uh, turn it to you.
If I could, um, explain, Susan emailed me during the beginning of this meeting that she is not able to speak because of a problem with go-to meeting. So I have the text, um, of what she was gonna share.
Great, go ahead.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
I'm also a member of the Harwich Climate Action Network. We support the creation of such a committee and want to be involved in designing it and setting it up. Ed's description of its purpose and scope is a good start, but there are areas that need clarification. We'd like to edit it and elaborate on it. Uh, we are aware that some of us from the Harwich Climate Action Network will want to serve on this committee and some won't. But our Climate Action Network will continue to meet and should a climate action committee be formed, we will work in collaboration with it. And that was a statement, um, from the whole group. Thank you.
Thanks, Clark. That's it for input. I guess we'll continue, uh, Joe will have to bring this back as, uh, agenda item. Uh, I would think the, uh, first Monday after the, uh, town meeting because Ed wants to continue involvement, so-
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to look, like trying to schedule some sort of forum.
Forum, for, yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, there, I don't think, you know, if we're gonna go, we're going to gather, you know, other comments, that's obviously going to be a, uh, a, a more involved process than something that can happen between now-
Right.
-and next, next week.
I agree.
Um, and certainly, uh, we possibly could take up in a week, looking forward to, uh, scheduling a public forum at some point-
Maybe that comes back quickly as what to, maybe you can schedule less activity going forward.
In the month of June, uh, before the, the summer really gets, uh, cranking. Uh, so, um, uh, move forward from there.
Could we start with the Cape Cod Commission making a presentation about their findings? Because, that's right, they, they mailed us something, but it'd be nice to actually get a presentation from them about how they view this regionally versus town-wide.
Yeah, I would suggest bringing it back, you know, three weeks from town meeting. I, I think it's time for the board to get a little bit of a pause. Ed's not going anywhere. Uh, he's not moving back to town.
And maybe we, uh-
Ed will, he will stay involved and I'm sure he'll make sure that we bring this back. And I think we're all, we're all committed, but let, let's take a little bit of a break.
Maybe, uh, the only, the only issue would be to come back with some type of schedule really quickly.
Yeah, and I, you know, you're right, I'm not moving, I won't be moving anywhere. And this is, like I said, an, uh, issue that I'm interested in and will probably ask to, uh, be involved with the committee.
Thank you, Ed. Yeah, we'll move next then to the, uh, item on the agenda is the, uh, the use of outdoor seating for several restaurants.
And if, uh, if I may, I'm prepared to make a motion, Joe.
Joe?
Uh, this, uh, we, we received an update, uh, so the board would want to be aware that Jake Rooney's is seeking, um, outdoor seating immediately. Their request obviously was May 1st, uh, but that would be upon adoption by the board through December 31st of this year.
Or 31st days?
Correct, understood. Anything would be truncated by Governor's order.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, does the application in the packet not reflect the December 31st date, Joe?
Uh, it was my understanding that the application in your packet, uh, simply said year-round weather permitting. So again, we just wanted to emphasize they expressed specifically May through the end of the year, end of the calendar year.
Okay.
Yeah, that was left out, okay. Um, I think we have the police chief on the call, so I can ask my normal questions.
Yes, please. Uh, hello, chief?
Chief, I just asked, like I have been doing, are any of these establishments, Lollawet, Jake Rooney's or Lighthouse Cafe, um, a problem?
No, no, no issues with any of those establishments related to, uh, expanded outdoor table service whatsoever.
Thank you, chief. With that, I move that we approve outdoor expanded table service previously approved in 2020 for Lollawet, 787 Route 28, Jake Rooney's, 119 Brooks Road, Lighthouse Cafe, 216 Route 28, uh, with the addition of the ending date of December 31st for Jake Rooney's. The other two are listed in the packet. Or the lifting of the emergency order by Governor Baker, whichever comes first.
Plus 60 days.
What's that?
It's plus 60 days.
Plus 60 days.
Plus 60 days.
Second.
Second. Joe?
Um, and just for the record, as we know, Lighthouse Cafe is seeking the outdoor service. They do not have liquor service, so that would be outdoor service only within their parking lot.
Okay. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just as a question, Patty from A&amp;W has not requested anything yet? I know that they had originally had some limited seating as part of their floor plan anyway, outside, you know, for picnic tables, but they have not applied for anything?
Uh, that's my underst- That's my understanding at present.
Okay.
Interesting question. I don't know whether we should, you know, they're for sale and they're running it temporarily, whether they've just forgotten it or.
Well, I mean, historically, they've had outside seating.
She has, she has full capacity inside right now and the tables outside.
Yes, that's what I was trying to clarify. She had augmented that at one point, but she had always had outside approved seating.
Right. So, that's now part of this action.
Correct. Staff inquired. There was no response for expanded outdoor service.
Okay, okay. We have motion in a second. Other discussion? If not, go with the roll call. Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm aye.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the 2021 seasonal common viculars license renewal for Lucky Labrador Inc., DBA Perks Coffee Shop and Beer Garden, 545 Route 28.
Second.
Second? Don, second? Don, any, or Don, Joe, comments?
No comments on this one. There is an individual from the general public who wishes to be heard on the next item.
Okay. Here you go. I'll take a roll call then. Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm aye.
So, the next up, before I make a motion on this, Larry, I think some discussion, because I have some questions related to hours. So, I'm not going to read a motion yet. That's my point.
Okay. Your discussion on hours were?
So, my, my, you know, they've, they've, they were 11:30 to 10:00 p.m. last year outside.
Right.
The request this year is 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., which, you know, I understand that the entertainment license also encompass background noise.
Yeah.
Television or radio playing or whatever, whatever it might be. I do know that in the past, there was a problem with noise with the neighbor, the direct neighbor, the inn.
Yeah.
Related to noise. And I, and I just think, you know, in the morning when people are getting their coffee and sitting at tables, I'm not sure how important the outdoor noise is. And I'm not sure that I have an appetite for expanding times at this point.
So, you're suggesting we move back to 1:00 p.m.?
I'm okay with the, what was last year was 11:30 to 10:00. I'm consistent with last year's hours. I'm comfortable with.
On Sunday also?
Last year's Sunday was?
1:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m.
Sunday, 1:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. And that would be indoor. Sunday, 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. outside is what they're asking for.
Outside, yeah.
I'm, I'm okay with the Sunday, 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. as well.
Okay.
The only, the only other comment I would make is the owners of this establishment, at least it's been reported to us, that they are putting in their own sound system for bands, as well as some more noise-baffling things. I'm not sure what they are, but.
Okay.
So, it sounds like they're taking some, some direction from comments made at the Noise Containment Committee meetings and purchasing some of their own equipment.
Yeah, we have the ability to revisit this at any time.
Absolutely.
Don?
Yeah, and as, as we've discussed with the other licenses, I'd like to make sure that whatever we do is predicated on this, as well as whatever the current noise bylaw is or becomes.
Yeah.
Because the other thing is, we have to, we have to take some of those recommendations and start bundling them into a general consensus about what we want all of Harwich Port to be like in terms of noise and what it gets governed by.
Yeah, agreed. Ed?
Well, just to note that it's good to relate this to our current noise bylaw or what it may become, but the practical aspect of what it may become is it's a bylaw and would have to be changed by town meeting. And so, that's certainly not going to happen until at least a year from now.
Might happen in September.
Yeah.
We don't know.
Yeah.
Okay.
The only, the only other comment I would have would be to the police chief, if I, if I may.
Yeah, please.
And I would just ask the police chief, I know there was a memo sent out by you early on, and there was three establishments that we had issues with or you had issues with. And, and you had some comments. Could you, could you just tell me your concerns and if there's anything current with this business or from last summer that we should be talking about?
Sure. All right. So, let me start off. The memo I sent when I stated I had some concerns, that was not directly related to an entertainment license issue, other than the history of what Perks has had. They have been brought before the board for disciplinary action several times since outside entertainment started. Last year, however, there were no, nothing brought, there was nothing brought before the board. There were six calls for service there related to noise, three of them reporting music, fairly late hours. All three of those calls went down in the logs, unfounded. The officers investigated them and heard no music. The other three calls are related to voices, patron noise or employee noise. So, as far as the entertainment issue, entertainment license issue with Perks last season, there were no complaints that were founded or pushed up to the board level, local licensing level. My memo was more a result of probably a combination of the, the history related to consistent violations being brought before the board since like 2016, and also some degree of correspondence that I was receiving last, early last summer, which alluded to issues with, with patrons leaving, drunkenness, disorderly, you know, things of that nature that gives me cause, but I'm not sure it's appropriate to discuss that now with the entertainment license on the table only.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Joe, we had someone else who?
We do. Bob Cohen wished to be heard relative to this discussion on entertainment license.
Bob, are you available?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can.
You can hear me, okay. Yeah, Mr. Chair, board members, Mr. Powers, I'm Bob Cohen from Pleasant Street, and I want to say right off that I believe that Perks and the Powells have made a real effort to be good neighbors. Because of this, I want to offer my conditional support for their entertainment license. I don't mean to say by this that Perks has been perfect. As you're aware, I did an informal noise survey during the summer of 2019, and on at least 10 nights during that summer, I recorded noise from Perks at extreme distances of 800, sometimes as much as 1,000 feet. Nevertheless, there are mitigating considerations. First, this is the lowest number of extreme noise incidents of any of the venues in the village. Second, the incidents were almost exclusively from their Monday night performer, which means that this is an issue that should easily be fixed. Third, and most importantly, as Mr. McCaskill just mentioned, I believe that the Powells have already made an important effort to correct this problem with the purchase of a house audio system. Hopefully, this will help them better manage their performers in the future. Perks hasn't been perfect, but they've been pretty good. They've owned up to their problems and are dealing with them. Though they have the smallest footprint and permitted noise range of any of the outdoor venues, they made an effort to work within their limits and have tried to be a good neighbor. They made an expensive investment in the pandemic here, which speaks to their commitment and sincerity. And I think they serve as an example that other establishments could learn from. Still, I think it's important to add some conditions to their license terms. First, because Perks is extremely close to a number of neighbors. And second, because current noise policy puts the onus on neighbors to deal with, report noise after the fact and after there's already a problem. And neighbors are stuck doing this repeatedly. In effect, neighbors end up serving as human decimal monitors, which saddles them with an additional burden over and above the noise. It's also adversarial, which sets the stage for confrontation. One fix to this is to establish proactive noise management measures, as I think the committee or the board is starting to look at, to keep the noise problems from happening in the first place. If I can show my screen.
We're all looking at Joe. Do you have to give your permission?
Well, I did it. So, so, okay. I just, just a list of the conditions. And I know Michael said that you wanted to take these, look at some of these, and, and Mr. Hollis said you might want to put some of these together. So, let me just, I would say that there's some very simple ones here, pointing the speakers away from neighbors. I would like to suggest, and this, these are the same conditions I proposed, very similar to the ones I proposed at the hearing last week, that we have limited hours for live entertainment, for evening hours only. In fact, I don't think there's very much daytime live entertainment that's done. I don't, I'm not certain that Perks has done much of that. So, why not just put that into license? And then treat other outdoor entertainment, which is, I believe, generally designed for, to create an ambience for diners. Why don't we treat that separately, perhaps under different conditions? That is, maybe it shouldn't be audible much beyond the premises, maybe 25 feet within the premises. It shouldn't, I don't think we need noise all day long. The house systems for amplified outdoor entertainment, Perks has already done that, so it would be helpful to put that, I would think it would be helpful to put that into the license terms, that all music go through, all amplified music go through their house system. There's some other points about self-regulation, decimal monitors, some things that the, no sing-alongs, that the Noise Committee mentioned. And I think the plain and audible standard needs to be better understood and better enforced. And I think a whole lot of these things can come up at a later time, but that's my input. I want to finally just say that I think the Powells have done a real good job. Not perfect, as I said, but they're an asset to the committee, to the community, and I wish them success. So, thanks much.
Thank you, Bob. Any comments on that?
Yeah.
I, I think, Bob, your main point is, is that those are all issues that we're considering going forward, especially with the Noise Committee. And, and I think Don mentioned coming back to bylaws. So, I'm not sure we, we want to put that in tonight, but there are concerns that, points we need to take forward. Are there other, Don?
Yeah, and I'd also like to point out that Embers is like 3/10 of a mile away from this. And I still have my Sunday concerns for outdoor entertainment. I'm not sure even 1 o'clock addresses that, but just bringing it up. We didn't approve Embers for one, I think it was six, wasn't it? Six to 10?
Six to 10.
Six to 10.
The outdoor portion.
Yeah, and, yeah, I think many of the recommended conditions Bob proposes are very much worth considering and possibly making part of the standard licensing. I think, though, the first one, where it says, point speakers away from residents, I think that should be more listed as speaker, something in the nature of speaker placement should be done to minimize the sound from traveling the premises. Because in many cases, you can be, you could point a speaker away from the residential area, but if you're pointing it right at a reflective service, you, you, you may be, you know, shooting yourself in the foot because reflected sound, in some cases, can be much louder than if it was just directly.
Okay, Michael?
I just, I would close with the, the obvious. I, you know, this board has, has taken up an awful lot of noise complaints since we, since the board voted entertainment and really bringing the entertainment to, to Harwich Port for everybody. And we do have some recommendations from a Noise Containment Committee, given, given where we're at with some lawsuits. The Chair has decided, and I think rightfully so, that we will wait until this is all behind us, and that we will bring back those recommendations. And those will be uniform recommendations, or I hope that they're uniform recommendations throughout town. The only comment I'll make about Perk now is, this is what he came in for. So, when they applied for their entertainment license, they applied for an entertainment license to do what they're asking to do now. They didn't apply for something else and transform it after the fact and then make allegations and claims that have, in my mind, unsupported and one-sided. But this is what they applied for. And as to what the chief said, I think that that's something that we should probably bring back, because he has concerns related to liquor, that I think that we need to relay to the establishment that we're going to have a zero tolerance policy on that. And I think that, related to noise, if this license gets approved tonight, the Powells need to know that it's a zero tolerance policy. You're going to get a warning if they're, if they're even do that at this point, because last, last year, they were, or a year ago, two years ago, they were found guilty, they were given a punishment, they served their punishment. Last year, there was nothing. And they need to know going forward that this is a very serious issue, and that if there's complaints, they're going to be before us, and we're not going to be waiting three, four, five, six months for pandemic reasons. We're going to make it happen.
Yeah.
We're going to make it happen right away. We have new administration, but the point is the hearings have to be done fast, and the punishments have to fit what the complaints are. As far as the chief's concerned on liquor, liquor, you know, public drunkenness or whatever we want to call it, we also need to relate it. That's going to be a zero tolerance policy also. All of us have supported business in Harwich Port and music in Harwich Port, and all of us now are taking a beating from, from establishments for, and again, my, my mind, a lot of it's very one-sided. I've read through all of the letters, and I'm not willing to continue on this path if there's violations. I want them before us fast.
Well, Michael, I think you've done a good job of warning people, so we'll, we'll.
Can only take so many public beatings on one-sided arguments.
Joe, any other comment? If not?
None of this time.
Okay. We don't have a motion yet because you wanted a discussion first. Do you care to have a motion? Don?
I think to Michael's point, we need to probably make, make the point, too, that we have a different administration now, and that our expectation from here, moving forward, is.
Rapid response.
It isn't going to be the 105th priority out of 100, which it appeared to be for many years.
Good, thank you. Michael, with that, you, are you ready to make a motion now?
Sure. All right. I move that we approve the 2021 seasonal entertainment license renewal for Lucky Labrador Inc., DBA Perks Coffee Shop and Beer Garden, 545 Route 28, consistent with last year's hours, 11:30 to 10:00 p.m. outside, Monday through Saturday, and 1 to 10, 10:00 p.m. Sundays. And inside was, inside 10:00 a.m. Let me just get this correct.
I don't think, do they, I don't think they had an inside last year.
And so, this is the only thing they're asking for is outside. So, that's it. So, I'm going consistent with last year's hours. I'm not approving the request for the change in hours.
To restate that, it starts at 11:30 rather than 10:00.
Right. So, it's, it's approval for 11:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. weekday, 1:00 p.m. to, 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Sundays.
Is there a second?
Second.
Good, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Other discussion? I'll go with the roll call. Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Don? We liked it.
I would have liked to have changed the Sunday hours. I'll vote for it.
And I'm an aye. Thank you. We'll, next on your agendas.
I'm prepared to make that. I just want to make one comment. Don, I, I do think sooner rather than later, as we approach the new year, we have to come up with a punishment structure, times, consistent times, and that we have a much longer conversation to, to be had. And I'm not against curtailing Sundays as well.
Yeah, my only point was that Pilgrim Church has been there for a long time before the, any of these things were, and the quiet convene, enjoyment of having the Sunday for most part.
That is a good point, because they did raise an issue with that.
Yeah, and so, I'm just reflecting it.
If we want to do a motion reconsider, it's totally up to the board.
I, I'm ready for a reconsideration, if anyone else is.
Second. Okay, vote to reconsideration.
Yep. We have a motion in a second to reconsider. I'll take a vote. Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
I'm an aye.
I'm an aye.
You want to rephrase the motion? Because I'd forgotten the, the testimony we had before from the church, quite frankly.
I'll let Don make this motion, if he wants.
I'd agree to everything except changing it to six to 10.
So, I move that we approve the seasonal entertainment license for Lucky Labrador Inc., DBA Perks Coffee Shop and Beer Garden, 545 Route 28.
Inc., DBA Perks Coffee Shop and Beer Garden, 545 Route 28, weekday, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. outside, no entertainment Sunday, with any and all other...
Well, you could go six to 10.
I, I would, uh, six to 10 on Sunday.
Is that what we did?
Yeah.
That's what we remember.
That's what we did with Embers.
All right, Sunday, six to 10, with any and all other conditions, uh, previously on the licenses.
Second.
Second. Joe, just for clarification, that's 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Other discussion? Okay.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Larry? I think, I, I think, uh, Michael, uh, said, uh, 10:00 a.m. weekdays, by, by mistake.
11:30, that was a mistake then, 11:30 was what, was the original measures.
I'm going to reread the motion, if that's okay.
Okay, I'll take my second back and then...
Okay, I'm going to start from scratch. Thank you, Bob. Uh, and then I would just ask one question before, before, no, I'm not going to bother. Okay, I move that we approve the 2021 seasonal entertainment license for Lucky Labrador Inc., DBA Perks Coffee Shop and Beer Garden, 545 Route 28, weekday, 11:30 to 10:00 p.m.
Yep.
And Sunday, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Second?
With any and all other restrictions on license.
Second, that's for outdoor.
Outdoor.
Okay. Other discussion? If not, I go with roll call, Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Sunday, the entertainment license, 2021 seasonal entertainment license renewal for Sunday School Inc., DBA Sunday School Ice Cream, 606 Route 28, weekday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m., recorded music, uh, indoor only.
They had requested to 10:30 on weekdays, and it's all inside.
Yeah. I put 10:30.
Oh, this is, uh, 10, this is all inside?
This is all inside.
Okay.
And you meant 10:00 rather than 10:30?
I said, no, I want 10, I'm, I'm making the motion for 10:30.
For both days?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor? Uh, Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm aye.
Mr. Chair, I move that we authorize the chair to, to sign Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA documents related to COVID-19 reimbursements.
Second.
Yeah, just comment, uh, Joe, for you and your staff putting together this tremendous pile of paperwork to, uh, to get this through is, uh, we owe you our appreciation, you and the staff.
Thank you, and if I may, may thank the member for making the correction, that was intended to be the chair.
Yeah, that, uh, and that's what I was going to point out to the public, that the packet in the agenda says Town Administrator before the meeting. Joe, correct the scribbler's error, it's chair.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments, uh, Joe?
Uh, none on this one, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Discussion from the board? Take a roll call, Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm aye.
Does anyone else want to make this motion, or is it, is it safe for me to do it?
You can do it.
I'll make it.
Okay. You want to do it, Ed? I don't, I don't know if somebody knows the person that's making the donation, that...
Uh, we also have our water, wastewater superintendent on the line who can speak to this one? For Patrick? Oh, for the other?
I'd, I'd move that we vote to accept a donation in the amount of $20,000 for the purchase of, purpose of purchasing and installing four water bottle filling stations in the town of Harwich.
Second.
Don?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I do know Patrick. I mean, it, it's, it's rare indeed that we have people coming to town meeting and requesting something, uh, that actually results in people having a, a negative consequence, who then turns around and graciously is willing to donate something to fill that void, uh, from his own pocket, so, I'm, I'm grateful.
I know, as Patrick's on the line, we, we know him from other meetings, but I also appreciate that he did, uh, clarify expenses, not only the, uh, purchasing, but maintenance, and, uh, so we didn't take it for granted that we were going to pick it up. We are picking up part of it, but at least it's explained. Michael?
I would, I would just echo Don's comments and thank Patrick for, uh, the donation of $20,000, is, is, uh, a great gift to the town of Harwich.
Goes back to my childhood, I seem to remember going to a bubbler and having water rather than a plastic bottle.
Bubla. Mr. Chairman, I do believe we have Patrick on the phone, uh, if he's there, I would certainly want to recognize him, but I'd like to add some compliments afterwards, if I may.
Okay, uh, Patrick, I think at this point you needed to defend yourself.
Hello, hello, everybody, good evening and thank you. This is Patrick. You know, I was talking with Dan, and he told me he was bored with not enough to do and needing a new project. So with the surge in the outdoor activity this year and the anticipated summer visitation boom, we decided to offer an Elixir, and that's award-winning harvest water for anyone wanting a drink. That means no age restriction and no license required. So I'm really happy that you're accepting this donation so that, uh, Howard, Harwich can stay in its prime and stay well, well hydrated, uh, for the, the seasons, okay? So, thank you. There's only one task you guys need to do, and that is to, uh, choose a color for the water bottle refill station, and that's within your packet, so, um, please, please help me and choose a color so that we can, uh, get Dan moving on this project before he decides something else to do, okay?
Cranberry red.
Thank you, I go for cranberry red, but, uh...
I'll third that.
That's one color. I guess we have to debate the second color.
Silver.
Uh, Joe, uh, you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, um, obviously to, uh, Patrick, our sincere thanks, um, but I, uh, Patrick almost covered it, but not completely, uh, meaning I had, uh, a few meetings with Patrick and our water and wastewater superintendent around this, uh, very generous gift and offer, and certainly in generous in its spirit. And I asked Patrick when he was, uh, interested in going before the board, and he said something along the lines, well, it strikes me that it's good news, so let's get it on. And so it certainly is good news, and, and I, and I want to add to the thanks to Patrick. I also want to add the thanks to our water wastewater superintendent, uh, who was equally engaged in this process, and I think if, uh, not to speak for Dan, but I think equally excited about this, because as, uh, Selectman Howell and you have all said, uh, it's one thing to impact upon our town, uh, through the citizen petition, as is your right, but to then take the next steps to, as promised during that discussion, to offer, um, a better solution, here he is. So he's a word, a man of his word, uh, and a man of, um, um, uh, great generosity. Uh, that's for Patrick. Dan's a good guy too, though.
I do kind of like the evergreen, too.
I, you know, I, uh, also want to thank Patrick for his, um, donation especially, but also for the efforts that he's put in, uh, in limiting the amount of plastics we have in our environment, and I've worked with him, uh, over the past couple of years on bringing some of those issues to town meeting, and I, uh, really applaud his efforts in that matter.
Thank you. So, uh, we have to, uh, accept a motion to, uh, you've made the motion.
Motion's made.
So let's, uh, take a roll call then. Joe, you've, you've said what you wanted to say?
Yes, I was just going to say if the board wants to convey your choices and colors, um, I can redirect that to Patrick at an appropriate time.
Okay. Take a roll call, Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm aye.
Mr. Chair, I mo- I move that we vote to accept a donation in the amount of $3,800 from Whichmere Harbor Real Estate LLC for the purpose of staking right-of-way lines along Route 28, Snowin Road and Freeman Street.
Second.
I may also denote that, uh, this is a point that we raised, uh, some time ago and hoping that we'd get some help on staking this out, so it's great that Whichmere, uh, stepped up and, and agreed to that. Uh, Michael?
Well, I, I was going to, uh, uh, echo your comments, Larry, but the, um, we did take this up, Traffic Committee made a suggestion, uh, the board voted that suggestion, and then we looked at Joe Powers and said, where are we going to get the money? Uh, Joe was exploring where we were going to find that money, and, uh, the owners of Whichmere stepped up and, and, uh, recognizing that that's a, uh, important intersection to them as well, and, and I think this is, again, is a very, um, this wasn't a donation for a portion, this was the entire estimate. So they're, they're paying for it all, and hats off to, uh, Griffin Ryder for putting this together.
Thank you. Joe, comments?
Couldn't have said it any better. Thank you.
As if Griffin always has spare time.
Well, we, yeah, Griffin and Dan, right?
Griffin and Dan have plenty of time.
They just happen to be on the meeting right now.
Well, you know.
Oh, Griffin, there he is.
We're going to take action to clone you as soon as we can.
I, I've, uh, in the last couple of months, worked a lot with Griffin, and be careful about, uh, uh, overloading.
Griffin, you're on. Uh, you have to...
I'm good, I just wanted to show my face that I'm here. You know, and I think that Whichmere really stepped up with this, and thank you, Michael, for, um, coordinating, helping to coordinate it.
Thank you. With that then, we'll, uh, uh, we have a motion and a second. Take a roll call, Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm aye. So that's the agenda up to, uh, Town Administrators' report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I will apologize in advance, uh, previous meetings I've held off. Um, I do have some housekeeping to do and then a few statements, if I could, relative to current events. Uh, first, there is, um, in, uh, hopefully in your materials, if not, we'll certainly get it to you, but, um, I executed a, um, an agreement, uh, procurement, I should say, um, for the Police Department for, um, mobile data terminals for police vehicles. Uh, this was in the amount of, uh, 29, uh, excuse me, $2,996. Uh, this goes back to, um, their operating budget. Uh, we have all of the contract information, uh, both the post and, uh, pre and post procurement, uh, that was done. I was able to, um, renew our injured-on-duty renewal coverage through Gowry Group, uh, that, uh, came due for fiscal year '22 in the amount of $6,600. And I just want to see this one here, it's a, an intermiss- intermunicipal agreement, uh, but I don't believe I, uh, s- uh, oh, sorry, here we go. Uh, this was an intermunicipal agreement between, uh, Plymouth County and the town of Harwich. Um, there was a, a timeliness, as you may recall, um, the town needed to execute this. It is for, um, uh, dredging work in, in Long Pond related to Plymouth County, um, and,